Hello. Good evening. You can't hear me? Can you hear me? It's because you're talking.
Do you want me to fire people down?
No. We're gonna start. We're going to start now because it's 7:00 o'clock.
Quietly take your seats.
Okay. We're starting, so.
Is that live?
Here we go.
They all sound low. Go ahead, talk into that.
Is this someone working?
Okay. Go, talk.
Good evening. Can you hear me? All right. I'm Ruth Riles. We can't start the movie until you're quiet. Thank you, Peter. Good evening. I'm Ruth Riles, President of the Porter Square Neighbors Association and a resident of Neighborhood 9. You can't hear me.
No, no, no. Talk into this.
I have wipes, if that's what you're worried about.
No, no, that's not it. It's just that it's too tall.
This forum. This forum. Can you hear me now? All right. This forum is hosted by Porter Square Neighbors Association, the Baldwin Neighborhood Council, and the Association of Cambridge Neighborhoods. Let me say how happy we are to be meeting with you all in person tonight. This forum is a unique opportunity to reach residents of North Cambridge, Porter Square, Baldwin, and Neighborhood 9. And since it will eventually be shown on CCTV, I think, next week. It will reach the whole city. We are recording this meeting, and it will be available to view on CCTV in a few days, and a link will be on the website of each of our neighborhood organizations. And we'll send it out to the PSNA listserv. Our goal is to offer you a chance to get to know these candidates and allow them to highlight their views and policies which are now most relevant to our neighborhoods. This year, 19 city council candidates will be listed on your ballot for Tuesday, November 4th. We invited them all here tonight. The candidates were given their option of which of the three panels they'll be on tonight. Before I yield the floor to our moderator, I want to express our appreciation for those of you who submitted questions and to our audience who are here attending tonight. And I heartily thank the forum planners. I want to express our appreciation for those of you -- whoops, I just said that. And those people I want -- who were the planners, working, meeting weekly for the last couple of months. Kathy Dalton, PSNA member. Gary Demetrick of the Association of Cambridge Neighborhoods and North Cambridge Neighborhood. Susan Hunziger, Vice President of PSNA and tonight's timekeeper. Foyby Sinclair, Maria El Baldwin Community Center. And Susannah Sagat, the Baldwin Neighborhood Council and formerly school committee member and tonight's moderator. We also want to thank Leslie University for the use of this auditorium and its fine audiovisual equipment. And as always, CCTV is a great partner. Finally, I want to remind us all of tonight's rules. There should be no signs, no campaigning or protesting within the hall. Also, we have tried hard to filter in as many of the questions you sent us in deciding on the questions asked tonight. The tight time schedule necessary to allow us to hear from all of the candidates requires that we allow no audience participation during the forum. Now, it is with great pleasure that I turn the program over to our moderator tonight, Susannah Sagat. Thank you so much, Ruth. All right. I'm sure you'll tell me if you can't hear me. Way too soon. Hold on. This is mic 3. Can you hear me? Okay. Thank you, Ruth. And welcome to the candidates attending this forum and welcome to the Cambridge residents, both in attendance and those watching in upcoming recordings. During the next 120 minutes, we will hear from the candidates who will be listed on the ballot for the Cambridge City Council. We will have three panels with five or six candidates per panel. During their panel session, each candidate will have several opportunities to speak. This is complicated, so you have to pay attention here. They have a 30-second opening statement, one minute to answer each of two questions, one which will be different for each panel, two lightning round questions for some quick answers, and a closing 30-second statement to make their pitch for your number-one vote. Okay. So the introduction -- okay, that gets even more complicated, but it's what keeps it lively. The introductions. The introductions are set in alphabetical order. The closing statements are set in backwards alphabetical order. And to allow for a smooth flow, the rest of the questions are in seating order. So with so many candidates to hear from in these two hours, we have to keep to a very tight schedule, and we thank the panelists in advance for being concise. In an effort to keep to the clock, Susan will keep time by showing the candidates the 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and time is up. Hold it up so they see the colors, and they'll know when they're being back. Time's up markers. Thank you, Susan. To prevent any awkward potential cutoffs, we have asked candidates to time themselves. Please forgive us in advance for being strict with the clock. Besides sticking to the timelines, we ask candidates to please be as specific as possible in their answers. By giving us details and specifics about their goals, it will be easier for our audience to assess how to rank their votes during the election. I will be reading the questions, and as Ruth mentioned, this forum is being recorded. Okay. Let's start with the first panel. Thank you so much for being here. Hello, candidates. Welcome to our neighborhood forum. Here's the format. We'll start with introductions. I'll call you in alpha order by last name. You'll have 30 seconds, then two questions, one minute each, and then lightning rounds, and then 30 seconds to tell people why they should vote for you. Okay? So we'll start with 30-second introductory statements. We'll go in alphabetical order. So Aya Alzubi, do you want to start?
No.
And Susan, you're gonna time 30 seconds, and we're watching you.
Hello. My name is Aya Alzubi. I use the She Her Series, and you might remember me from the 2023 election when our campaign came in 10th of the 9th seat as the first runner-up. We're back again because we have a relentless vision to make our city dignified and affordable for everyone. And especially under the Trump administration, we have to step up to make that vision real. I'm sure we'll dive a little bit more into the platform, but our campaign believes in housing, transportation, childcare education, and economic justice. So thank you all for doing it.
Thank you. Tim, and then John.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tim Flaherty. I'm a candidate for Cambridge City Council. I've lived in the city my entire life, some 60 years. I grew up in a two-family house about 10 blocks from here on Woodbridge Street. I then rented an apartment just outside of Harvard Square for more than a decade before I bought my house at the intersection of Huron Ave. and Fresh Pond Parkway. I'm a husband, a father, a lawyer, former prosecutor of Coach C Y L basketball at St. Peters and West Cambridge Little Baseball League, the Tigers, and am very committed to this city. I'd be very pleased to have your vote. My lived experiences combined with my professional experiences, I believe, have suited me well and prepared me well to be your next city councilor.
Thank you. John, and then Patty.
I apologize.
Hello. I'm John Hanready. Over the past six years, I've been a community advocate representing numerous neighborhoods throughout the city. I've concluded that we need change to change the city council to better serve neighborhoods.
John, we can't hear you.
Does this work?
I don't think it's on.
Turn it on, please. There's a button on the side for turning it on.
Is this the one on the top?
Yeah, that's it.
Can you hear this?
No.
No.
Yes.
Hear that? All right. All right. You really gotta be close. Okay. So I'm John Hanready. Over the last six years, I've been a community advocate representing numerous neighborhoods in the city. I've concluded that we need to change the city council to better serve neighborhoods and the middle class. I'm also a member of the repeal slate, a group of new candidates which want to change the council and also repeal the upzoning amendment in law. Rank us 1 through 4 on your ballot. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, and then Robert.
Patty Nolan, I represent you with a thoughtful, data-informed approach that balances competing perspectives on complex issues. I'm nuanced, and that makes me vulnerable in these polarized times. I am effective at making positive change. It's in climate, transportation, good planning, housing development. I provide the receipts for all my claims. When we face financial headwinds, I am best positioned to lead us. My background as a small business owner, McKinsey consultant, nonprofit leader is invaluable. And I have the courage and analytical ability to ensure fiscal responsibility.
Thank you. Robert, and then Kathy.
Hey there. My name's Robert Winters. I know quite a few people in the room here over the years. My history really is just being involved in a lot of civic things over the many years, whether it includes creating the candidate pages, which I'm sure some people may have actually used to find out about the candidates, and the calendar as well. I write something called the Cambridge Civic Journal. Been involved in a lot of things in the development of the charter, which is on the ballot this year. I even was involved in some of the programming for the election count we actually use, which is kind of ironic. I've been involved in recycling, composting, Central Square Affairs, Green Ribbon Open Space Committee, Library 21 Committee. And as far -- the way I look at it really is that candidacy is really just the next level up. That's it.
Thank you. Kathy?
My name is Kathy Zusi, and I'm running for reelection. I'm a 30-year resident of Cambridge and a 25-year civic leader. I led the revitalization of Magazine Beach Park, the city's second-largest park. By training, I'm a museum curator and project director. I care about facts and the big picture. I was a lone vote against multifamily housing ordinance. I am a cyclist and support the lanes and green transportation, and also advocate for the needs of drivers. I ask for your number-one vote.
Thank you all for these introductory remarks. We will now ask our first question. This one is on development and future zoning. First question. And we're gonna start with you, Patty, and go down the table.
Over the past couple of years, city staff have met with residents, business owners, and other stakeholders along the Mass Ave corridor to produce a new zoning plan for North Mass Ave from Cambridge Common through Porter Square to the Arlington Line. This Porter Square overlay will potentially be zoned for 15- to 18-story buildings. Describe what should be built. How can we ensure trees, open space, and a human-centered environment be included?
Patty, do you want to --
How much time is it?
One minute.
One minute.
Sorry, it's short, but.
No, it's okay. So Mass Ave is actually exactly the right place to put at least some development. It's one thing that when we talked about the Affordable Housing Overlay, I thought instead of putting it in through all our neighborhoods, let's really focus on some of our corridors. Because Mass Ave, there's a lot of 1-story buildings there. They could be easily 6- or 8-story buildings, and you could solve a lot of our housing issues by having that kind of building up. And in the squares itself, there should be additional building. I think the city, to reach out to small businesses, which we didn't do a good job on some of the prior development that we did, that we have to work with neighborhoods as well, we do have to also have a mix of residential, retail, and office space, which is exactly what happened. My vision for this is exactly what I helped make happen in AirWife, which is instead of zoning all for labs and offices, I put a moratorium in so that what would end up there in the AirWife, the last undeveloped area of the city, was retail, housing, and office space, and we're to create a real neighborhood. And that's the vision for that section of Mass Ave going from Arlington all the way down to Harvard Square. Thank you.
So Robert, do you need the question answered?
No, no, I can do this. What Patty just said, actually, in a way. No, I'm all for growth and development, but the way I've been looking at it this all along, and it's not just with the multifamily housing, it's not just with the Mass Ave zoning, or the Cambridge Street rezoning, or even the Affordable Housing Overlay, is that, you know, there's a big difference between, you know, two, 2.5-story buildings and 18-story buildings. And it just seems to me, most of the time, that city planners and some of the elected officials, they look upon this almost like it's a dare rather than a plan. You know, where's the happy middle ground? I think we could all -- I mean, I'd be more than happy to see all of North Mass Ave allowing apartment buildings, four, six, maybe even a few 8-story buildings here. I don't think I'm very supportive of the idea of having 12-story buildings the whole length of it, or 18 in the middle of Porter Square. So that's how I feel about it.
Thank you. Tim?
Lawyers might say about this question -- oh, thank you. Lawyers might say about this question, it assumes a fact not in evidence. What should be built? Well, I guess something should be built, but I think that I agree with Governor Healy, with her idea about housing in Massachusetts. And it's not necessarily that we should build our way out of the crisis that we're in, which is a regional crisis. And 15- to 18-story buildings along Mass Ave doesn't make sense to me. I grew up just off Mass Ave, two doors behind the Century Bank, and I live on one of the corridors on Fresh Pond Parkway. I think I'm the only candidate in this race who's got that lived experience of being on a corridor. Governor Healy is talking about increasing transit housing around MBTA stations. I'm in favor of that. And I agree that mixed-use housing, mixed-use development makes sense in certain appropriate locations on Mass Ave, but not 15- to 18-story buildings. It's inappropriate.
Thank you. Aya?
In our campaign, we believe that we can't expect the same forces that brought us into the housing crisis to take us out of it. Our campaign did not accept the endorsement or seek the endorsement of ABC or CCC because we believe in bridging a third lane on the housing crisis, one where we leverage government resources to ensure the sustainability of the affordability of our housing. In terms of the squares, it's important for us to recognize that we need to integrate the conversation with our local economy and our transportation. We can't just rezone and then not incorporate the other pieces that people need to live. And also, our campaign believes in restricting biotech development, especially when we've put so much up across our city. And we also need to incorporate tree protections and solar panel equity, because at the very end of the day, if someone wants to come in and develop, there has to be equity for our residents. And so I hope you know that we would want to explore listening to your stories in terms of that.
Thank you. Kathy?
Thank you. In VISION, I'm a big fan of Invision Cambridge, which is our, you know, over 5,000 people were involved in writing Invision or contributed to the writing of Invision Cambridge, which was developed over a three-year period, which said that most of our growth should be along our corridors. So I agree that growth should -- most of our growth should be along the corridors. But I agree that 12, 15, and 18 stories is too high. I am the only one on the current council who's been pushing back about that height on the corridors and realize that it could be much higher in exchange for community benefits, and also if it's an affordable housing overlay project. So it could go up to 25 stories, as being considered now. If you don't want that to happen, you should certainly be giving testimony at upcoming meetings of the Ordinance Committee. I -- what else? I've been asking my colleagues to think about who we're housing and who we want to house going forward, and I think we really need those numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. John?
Yeah, so the map study, the Mass Avenue planning study that was done, came out with a report. The report had, I think it was six or eight sections in it. Some of it was about making it a destination place for where people would enjoy coming to. Some of it talked about open space for people to be able to commute and let off some steam and get to know each other. Some of it was about trees and how we should have vegetation in this city to cool us off and also give us clean air. But the only thing -- it did talk about housing, and that's the only thing that's gotten any attention from the council at this point, moving forward. So housing, housing, they want to put 15 stories in. That's, in my opinion, way too high for the neighborhood. Right now, it's 1- and 2-story buildings. We could go much lower and double or triple the location. So make it more inviting and --
Thank you, panelists.
-- my time.
On to our second question. This one is about housing. Again, this is a one-minute question, and John, we're gonna start with you and move down the table. So question two. What is your vision for balancing the city's needs for affordable housing, market rate -- excuse me, market-rate housing, and the desire to maintain open space, trees, parking, and that elusive quality of what we call neighborhood character?
Okay. Go on, number one here. So what's a vision for housing? I think that, you know, housing is much more than buildings. I think we need to really consider the whole environment that we're building, and it's -- where's a home? A home is where you have neighbors, where you have -- you spend your time. It's the -- it has a lot to do with the quality of your life. So I think that my vision would be, one, is that we look at the whole picture of this for building, not only for the -- okay, sorry about the phone. More about the vision of what a home should be and a neighborhood should be. I think as far as the various types of housing, we need to, when we talk about affordable housing, we have to be talking about affordable for who. Right now, the upzoning is gonna buy -- build primarily market-rate housing, probably more expensive than they have today's. We need to figure out what it is we want to do and do it for the right people.
Kathy?
I'm very aware of the need to build more housing in Cambridge, and I'm very aware that when I was a young person and moved to the greater Boston area, you know, I could live here for $4.50 a month or $6.25 a month, living in a naturally affordable unit, and work at the Museum of Fine Arts and have a really great life. And I realize that young people don't have that opportunity now. Young families don't have that opportunity, and our city workers don't have that opportunity. So I think there is a need to create more housing. I voted against the multifamily housing proposal because I felt it would destroy neighborhoods and mostly reduce luxury housing, inflate real estate values, and displace the very people it was meant to serve. I think there is a need. There are 16 AHO projects currently in the works. I think we need to encourage them along, and I think we can preserve neighborhood character, trees, open space, and even our historic preservation, all of those things, and build housing.
Thank you, Aya.
Our campaign does not take real estate developer money or corporate money. We want to put people first. Our city has a AAA bond rating. We're one of few cities across the United States that has this rating. So when we say that we're bridging a third lane on the housing crisis, we want to leverage government resources. Our AAA bond rating is one way to do that, when we can take out, let's say, a $50 million loan to push housing production that we know is guaranteed to remain affordable and not necessarily handed to developers. We also see housing as a public good, because everyone deserves to have some form of shelter. I also want to acknowledge that, again, we need equity in these conversations when it comes to our climate sustainability goals. How do we tackle the tree piece? How do we tackle solar panels? And I would be remiss to not include tenants protections. I want to work on tenants protections in terms of a rental assistance program or a rental registry, and also open a new shelter to support our folks experiencing homelessness because our city just closed down a homeless shelter this year.
Thank you so much. Tim?
To put the housing -- oh, can everyone hear me? I'm sorry if you can't. To put the housing crisis in its proper context, this is a regional issue. It's not specific to Cambridge. We don't live in a silo, and Governor Healy has a plan. We should be following it. It's a regional issue. And what she's talking about is incentivizing ADUs, accessory dwelling units, creating more transit housing, and repurposing office buildings into residential homes by using historical tax credits, low-interest mortgages, and grants. That's something we should be examining here. How do we maintain the character? That is an elusive question. I know that the neighborhood that I grew up in has been dramatically changed, and most of the kids that I grew up with have been displaced. The middle class is leaving Cambridge. I agree with Aya that maybe we can create some municipal housing here in Cambridge and direct it to essential workers, and that would be a good idea. We've got the Riverview condos that's about to be demolished. If we were serious about this, maybe we could invest in that.
Thank you, Tim. Robert?
Perhaps this will be unpopular for me to say that. I didn't actually support the Affordable Housing Overlay, and I'm very concerned. When I served on the Housing Working Group of Invision Cambridge, I was very concerned about what exactly is the sweet spot in terms of what degree of subsidized housing the city should have. One of the things I think people should understand is that subsidized housing of any form is de-restricted housing, produces very, very little revenue for the city. So the thing is, who's gonna pay for that? There is an issue there, because it's -- for a lot of time, a lot of the past few decades, it was all just dumped on the continued massive commercial development. Well, now that's a little bit iffy. So if that well runs dry, it's gonna be dropped on the -- right into the laps of all the other residential homeowners. And there is a sweet spot. I'd say it's probably in the vicinity of about 15% subsidized that I would be totally okay with, but I don't think it should be sky's the limit at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Patty?
Thank you. We already allow ADUs, just for the record, in about 17% of our housing, and it's already subsidized. So balance in this discussion is precisely what I always bring to every single conversation, every single policymaking decision that I have. What I think my vision is that we need more middle-income housing. We have a lot of subsidized housing. We have a lot for the wealthy folks. We do not have enough, and we are losing middle-income folks. We can address that by having all of our policies directed and ensuring workforce housing. We also need more mixed-income housing instead of segregating people into different spaces. It would be really healthy for the city, and we know that's the best way to address economic mobility as well. We also, the question included, do we need green space? Yes, we need green space. We need to be treating our trees as infrastructure, and the green of our neighborhoods and the beautiful historic homes are part of what makes Cambridge special. That is part of our character. I believe that we can build more housing, paying attention to these attributes of middle-income housing and mixed-income housing, paying attention to green space, and we'll be able to make -- use the benefit of all the funding that's already out there and use it a little smarter.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you all. Okay, so now we have lightning round questions. So our goal is to get quick answers from you, and we'll continue going up and down the table. Okay. So this is about the city manager. You are elected to the council, and the city manager offers to sit down with you to provide background information on a city issue you might be interested in. What is the issue you choose? One topic.
How long do we have? Or just one?
Nothing. Nothing.
Totally jazzed to know what we're doing for the district energy geothermal pilot and how quickly we can deploy it in Cambridge as a transformative way to decarbonize and make our city fossil-free.
I'd love to get more information about city assessments and who's buying all the property in the city. There's been a lot of rumor about a lot of, you know, investment, turning a lot of homeowners -- instead of homeowners, we're getting investment properties. I would love more information about that.
If I get a chance to sit down and speak with them, with your help, with your number-one, maybe I will, I'd like to talk to them about the fiscal sustainability of the city. As you know, commercial property can only be taxed at -- oh, I'm going over.
You're done.
Yeah, that's not -- that wasn't lightning. Excuse me. I'm sorry.
Just two words. Go ahead.
You've got more words?
Couple of sentences is fine. One simple sentence is fine.
I would want to go back to the fundamentals. How do we change structure so that we have more clarity and transparency in government? Thank you.
I would want to ask where he's gonna cut back. I know he needs to meet with city departments, but we definitely need to cut back our budget. We'll have much less money going forward.
Yeah, I agree. I think I would want to talk to him about the budget and the fiscal responsibility. I also would like to talk to him about how do we build a culture within the city of saving money and getting the most for our bucks.
Thank you. Okay, here's the second one. It's about your pride. What makes you proud to say you live in Cambridge? Yeah, John? What makes you proud to say you live in Cambridge?
Well, I'm proud to say we, uh, I live in Cambridge because it is sort of a hub of, of culture, of business, of ideas, of types of people, of, it's a place that you want to go and be. It's such a great place.
I, I am proud of our very big heart. We have extraordinary resources here, and we, uh, try to raise everybody up.
We are home to activism, community, and diversity.
I'm proud of our diversity, and I'm very proud of our history.
I'm very proud of this microphone.
Made in Cambridge.
Maybe. Uh, for me, it's, we live in a historic city and a city with a lot of really smart people, where I can talk to anybody and love the conversation.
Unbelievably phenomenal array of services for every single age across the span.
Thank you. Okay, now it's time for closing statements. You have 30 seconds for closing comments or to bring up anything that you think might be relevant in reverse alphabetical order. So we'll start with Kathy and then Robert.
I'm rarely first. Because Cambridge faces urgent, why vote for me? Because Cambridge faces urgent challenges in housing, climate change, transportation, and our finances. These challenges must be addressed with care and foresight, not with ideological solutions that create, will create bigger problems later. These challenges require wise and experienced leadership, my leadership. I am a balanced candidate with a broad view. I do my homework. I get stuff done. Please give me your number one vote. VotesuC.org.
Thank you. Robert, then Patty.
And I've got to make it quick, because I actually have to teach a class at about 8:10, so. So, um, for me, I think the primary reason why I would urge people to consider me for your number one vote is that I'm a person who believes in taking a middle ground on things. I'm not an extremist. I'm not an ideologue. Uh, I just want to do things well, research things well, and do things right, and do things that can be done within the ci, within our budget, to keep things affordable for all of us. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, and then John.
So, if you have concerns about the upzoning, you should absolutely vote number one for me, since I worked to make an extreme proposal that would have passed better, imperfect yet far better. And now more than ever, Cambridge needs someone who does the homework, asks tough questions, and puts principles ahead of politics. And as a founder and leader of Crimson Courage, Harvard and state academic freedom, I play a really important role in fighting federal overreach. And not only vote number one for me, but please vote yes on the new charter.
Thank you. John, and then Tim.
Sure. So I'm, I've been here for 30 years, over 30 years. I raised my son, and he went to public school here. I've started several high-tech companies, uh, in, in Cambridge. I've been active in the community activism and, and working with the city. So I bring unique business and city knowledge to, to the council. I'm looking for your number one vote, um, in November. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, and then Aya.
Well, thank you. I'd like to ask each and every one of you personally for your number one vote. Um, I'm hoping to bring balance to the Cambridge City Council. I'm opposed to the, uh, upzoning ordinance that was recently passed. I think it's a bad idea to incentivize demolition of one, two, and three-family homes for the construction of four-story buildings with no element of affordability. That doesn't sound like a good idea to me, but I'm not opposed to developing affordable housing for our needs. So I think there's a middle ground here. I'd like to pursue it, and I think I can compromise, and I'm hoping you see that. FlahertyforCambridge.com. Thank you very much for your attention.
Thank you. Aya?
We want to community-build in our campaign. We believe that a vote for our campaign is a vote for you. We believe that a vote for our campaign is a vote for more empathy, more curiosity, and conviction in public service. We believe that a vote with our campaign is a vote for people power, because we don't take real estate developer money, and we don't believe in corporate interests. And I'll leave you with this. Please get to know more of each of our actions and choices, because integrity and transparency are also an important part of serving in this role.
Thank you, panelists. Now, they did a great job sticking to their time. So, we'll, we'll take a minute for you to stretch, one minute, and bring the other candidates in. Thank you. I love this event. You're all wonderful to be here, and I've gotten several helpful, I've gotten several helpful.
Who said that?
Everyone.
Now? I didn't do anything different. Okay. So the most helpful comment I got was that I should remind you to turn off your phones. Turn off your phones, please, especially all of you. Welcome, panel two. Thank you for coming. So, hello, candidates. Welcome to our neighborhood forum. Here's the, here's the format for the second panel. We've told them this already, so it's not as scary. We'll start with introductions. I'll call candidates in alphabetical order by last name. Then we'll pose two questions, one minute each, to be answered in seating order. After these questions, we'll have a lightning round of quick questions with hopefully quick answers. After that, in backwards alphabetical order, you have 30 seconds for closing comments or to bring up anything that you think might be relevant. Okay, well.
How long do we have?
So, I will tell you, this first one, you have 30 seconds for introductions. So we'll go in alphabetical order, so Burhan is first and McQueen is second. 30 seconds.
Just for introductions?
Yes, just, yes.
All right. And?
Oh, and can I, I'm sorry, stop the timer. I just want you to know, you do need to use the mics, because CCTV is recording, and they need to have the mics to have your voice be in the recording. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hi, everyone. My name is Burhan Azim. I'm your city councillor. I'm finishing up my second term on city council, um, but this is also my fourth election season, because I lost the first time around. Um, my background is I went to MIT. I have an engineering degree. Um, I also started this organization called Abundant Housing Massachusetts, which has been focused on building housing statewide or changing policies to allow all cities and municipalities in Massachusetts to build housing. Um, and a lot of what I focus on in city hall are what I call the three biggest issues in terms of cost, housing, childcare, and transit. Um, so that's a little bit about me. Thank you.
Thank you. McQueen, and then Elizabeth.
I'm sorry, I think, I think you guys can hear me. Hi, my name's La Queen Battle. It's a pleasure to be here at Leslie University tonight. Thank you to Porter Square, um, Association, and right down the street is Harvard, Harvard Law School. Um, I'm the daughter of a single parent, Larry Battle, who's the founder of Pals Electronics, which is also a building down the street. Um, it's a pleasure to be here. Oh, thank you. Um, I'm a graduate of Purdue University, as well as five certificates from Harvard Medical School, as well as City College of Chicago. God bless you all, and I'm also on social media. Thank you.
Thank you. Elizabeth, and then Peter.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is Elizabeth Bizzio. I'm a renter and Cambridge Crossing neighbor. I started my career as an emergency room nurse before moving into healthcare innovation, and today I lead product and operations for Tandem Vet Care, which is a local veterinary startup that serves hundreds of families. Um, my work has been centered around building systems that serve people better. I'm running for council because I believe leadership needs dreaming big, but also holding ourselves accountable for goals that create real benefits for all of Cambridge, not just headlines.
Thank you. Peter, and then Mark.
Hi, my name is Peter Shu, and I'm a currently practicing physician, and I would love to raise the standards of public health for the most vulnerable populations here in Cambridge, also obviously for all Kansas Bridges, especially for homelessness, substance use, and mental health crises. I think public health encompasses more than just taking care of the needles, including fair economics and housing affordability, something that I did not feel that the upzoning bill from February stood for. And therefore, I'm a part of this repeal, um, neighborhood upzoning slate, and I hope you would consider.
Thank you. Mark, and then Ned.
Thank you, and thank you to our hosts, and thank you to all of you for being here. This is always the best-attended forum. Uh, my name is Mark McGovern. I'm a lifelong Cambridge resident, a social worker for 30 years, who's worked with some of the most vulnerable children and families right here in Cambridge and across the state. Uh, since joining the council 12 years ago, I have been a strong voice for housing affordability, early childhood education, addressing homelessness in our community, as well as mental health, food insecurity, and income insecurity. I'm proud of my record. I believe I've made tangible differences in people's lives, and I hope to return. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Ned.
Hi, everybody. Ned Malanson. I'm a challenger candidate this year, running for the first time. I live in Cambridge Fort, and I'm a public defender up at Cambridge District Court. I'm also a social security disability lawyer, and, uh, I really want to bring, uh, the voices of the disabled and the elderly, elderly, um, into the conversation, especially around getting around town and, and just, you know, leading healthy lives within the city. I, I think their voice really deserves to be heard, and that's what I hope to do. Thank you.
That mic isn't on.
That would be helpful.
Thank you. Thank you all for these introductory remarks. We will now ask our first question. This one is on neighborhood safety. This is a one-minute question. Elizabeth, we'll start with you and then move down the table. Question number one. The Porter Square area is experiencing an increase in drug dealing, increased drug refuse, and incidents of shoplifting. What is the city's responsibility in addressing these alarming issues? Elizabeth, and then Burhan.
So, this is an issue very close to my heart, as a former emergency room nurse and somebody who's taken care of hundreds of people facing addiction. Um, as, if elected to the city council, I would like to see a joint effort between CARE, the city's police department, CHA, and the fire department to address the addiction crisis within the community, focused on, um, really making a difference on needle pickups as far as how can we get cleaner, safer streets. Right now, we do have some programs that are, um, trying to address the issue, but it's simply not enough. We need a joint effort across departments in order to really make a difference with our community.
Thank you. Burhan, and then McQueen.
So I think this is a hard question. There's stuff that we can do at every stage to make it a little bit better, but fundamentally, it is a challenge that is really difficult to solve at this moment. So the first answer is like, a lot of people who are on the streets go into drug use partially because they don't have a place to go, they need support services. Um, on Norfolk Street, we just opened transitional housing, and so we're trying to provide housing that can be more than a shelter, provide more space in a space to really get better. And so I think that those are some, uh, opportunities that we're providing. Um, and then the second is like, you know, we're just expanding Narcan access, we're trying to, uh, solve that problem acutely, but also, you know, we're not in an isolated ecosystem. Um, as Michelle Wu and Boston have cracked down on mass and CAS, we get more people here, so we're taking care of more people more than ever, but it's also a little bit of a game theory problem, where everyone feels like they can push, uh, people around, and we try to take care of more, but we can't take care of everyone, and so it's also about that regional piece. And then finally, I would say, it's like, also just about the day-to-day of safety. You know, I have, in controversial votes, supported adding more cameras, so that we can at least know what's going on and kind of have a better police presence in places.
Thank you. McQueen, and then Ned.
Um, yes, so I do agree that there should be more supportive services to help people that are in addiction and, and recovery, but unfortunately, right now, um, there is discrimination involved in with people that are accused of shoplifting, as well as discrimination with immigrants right now. And, um, it's kind of finding a balance between supporting businesses, supporting mom-and-pop stores. Um, I do live in East Cambridge by Twin City Plaza, and there has been an accumulation of mom-and-pop stores that have shut down. And right now, CBS has shut down, Walgreens have shut down, there's been many stores in East Cambridge that have shut down. And we need to continue to support these mom-and-pop stores, continue to support these businesses, as well as those in, in recovery and addiction services, and provide more incentives from the city council to make sure that, that stays in place. Thank you.
Thank you. Ned, and then Mark.
So I see a lot of this issue in my work as a public defender. A lot of the people that, um, live as, you know, live homeless in Central Square, for instance, often end up in Cambridge District Court for crimes that I would call property crimes or crimes of poverty, crimes of addiction. So there's not much we can do to stop that if we don't attack the source. So if we don't solve the homelessness, solve the addiction crisis, we won't solve the crime problem, but we still need to treat the crime problem, and that comes from a variety of, you know, working with social workers, working with the police, working with aid, working with street teams, working with businesses. It's not a one-size-all-fits-solution, but I think, you know, we can still, again, um, come together and really treat this. But again, if we don't, you know, attack the source, then it'll just be a cycle, as I often see in, um, the district court. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter? Oh, no, I'm sorry, Mark.
Uh, thank, thank you for this question. When I, when I joined the council 12 years ago, the council was not talking about homelessness. They were not talking about drug addiction, not talking about mental health. This has been something that I've been working on and steadily banging the drum to make sure that we are supporting folks who are struggling with these issues, and I'm really proud of the progress that we've made. Um, the 93 studio apartments that Burhan mentioned, those moved 93 people off the street and into studio apartments this year. I was a part in making that happen. Um, now that our police carry Narcan, it was my policy order that made that possible. Um, the, the work to expand the, the care team, I was, the, I was on the task force and the co-chair of the task force that led to the care team, a non-police response to homelessness and nonviolent crimes being created. So I'm very proud of that. Um, I believe that we, just because, and I don't want people to confuse us, just because I am incredibly compassionate towards people who are struggling with homelessness and addiction, doesn't mean I don't believe in accountability, and I don't agree with keeping our neighborhoods and our communities safe. It's a balance. But I won't criminalize homelessness. We're not going to arrest our way out of the problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
So, this issue is near and dear to my heart. Um, about four years ago, I took care of a patient with drug overdose, and, um, at the time of discharge, I said, "Ready to go." He said, "I don't know what to do." I said, "What do you mean?" He said, "Other than drugs, I don't know what else to do." This was a young dude from Central Square, and so that was actually my motivation of coming into local politics. I think, I think how we address this issue, I can break it down to like three phases. For the acute phase, uh, we obviously need collaboration among, uh, Cambridge Police, Public Health Department, Cambridge Police Department, the care team, and also shelter for immediate housing for, for these people. Uh, later on, then we need to, we need our healthcare system, our hospital system, and also social workers to bring, uh, resources in and, and support groups to, to make sure they are reconnected with society. And then lastly, we need to expand our addiction medicine service and have safe injection sites.
Thank you, panelists. Onto the second question. Uh, this one is about development and future zoning. It's a one-minute question. Peter, we'll start with you and come down the table. Question number two. Over the past couple of years, city staff have met with residents, business owners, and other stakeholders along the Mass Ave corridor to produce a new zoning plan for North Mass Ave from Cambridge Common through Porter Square to the Arlington Line. The Porter Square overlay will potentially be zoned for 15 to 18-story buildings. Describe what should be built. How can we ensure trees, open space, and a human-centered environment being included? Peter?
I think this is a, this is a balance. I think all of us are for affordable housing. Uh, I don't, I don't think anyone in, in the room or, at least most of us, will say that we're not for affordable housing, uh, but it's a balance. I think, I think, you know, having these, I personally favor building big and tall along the main arteries of, of Cambridge, but how big and how tall, I think there needs to be a master plan. Currently, with a, with a, with a super-tall building, super-big buildings extending into neighborhoods, I do not believe we have the infrastructure to support that.[1739.88] Like, that's what I don't believe in. So, I think for future projects, we have to have a master plan in terms of what we need to do with green space. What kind of species do we need to kind of plant to maximize health effects? Parking spots, and, you know, pollution, decarbonize, all these kind of stuff. We need a master plan. That would be my take.
Thank you.
So, I don't think it's any secret to anybody that I support building more housing. And that means building taller buildings. Cambridge does not have the space to solve our housing crisis by building triple-deckers. We just don't. It's not whether I like that or not. That is a fact. And so, we have to build taller buildings. And if you don't want taller buildings or much taller buildings in neighborhoods, we have to build taller buildings along the corridors. And so, you know, we have always been a city that has welcomed new people. I want us to continue to be a city that welcomes new people, and we do that by adding more housing. You know, we hear all the time that we need a master plan. We need this. We have done so many plans. And every time we do a plan, people say, "Oh, no, no, that's not the plan. I want something different." We did Envision Cambridge. We spent $4 million or something on it. It was a community-led process. It came up with a plan. And now, people are saying, "Oh, no, not that plan." So, I don't know if we need any more plans. But what I do know is that housing is too expensive. We have a housing shortage. And you don't address the shortage by not building more. So, I support it.
Thanks, Ned.
Thank you, yeah. And thank you to Mark for those thoughts. I definitely agree with that. So, it's a special night for me. It's my birthday. I just turned... Thank you. Thank you.
Stop the timer.
Yeah, stop the timer. So, I turned 32 today. Some fun fact about my generation: We have the lowest rate of homeownership in history. I don't really know another time when a 32-year-old was, you know, it wasn't weird to be living with two other guys. I'm sure your generation was looked down upon, but for me, it's normal. Most of my friends don't own houses. And again, if we don't build tall around the corridors, around the transit, my generation won't own houses. Won't build in advance to that next stage in life. So, I know it's tough. I know construction sucks. But just think about people like me who are trying to ditch their roommates and get a house and start a family.
And happy birthday.
Thank you.
Yes. Hello. Thank you. Happy birthday, Ned. My birthday is also next week. I'll be the big... I'll be the big 4-0. I'll be the big 4-0. And my birthday is also on the day that Harvard was founded, not Leslie, but Harvard. So, thank you so much. It took me six years to get qualified for housing here in the city of Cambridge. I've been homeless and transitional all throughout New York State, Chicago, California, Texas, all over. I do support Councilman, his services. Upzoning, upzoning, upzoning is a really big issue. Unfortunately, the city of Cambridge can no longer afford to build three-story units anymore. I live in a four- or five-story unit in a very beautiful building, Putnam Square apartment, Putnam Square. And right now, a lot of people in my situation are no, do not, are not able to get afforded affordable housing. So, I do support upzoning. I do support continuing to build more units. I do support homeownership for young people as well. So, thank you.
These conversations are hard, right? I think that everyone in this room probably struggles with rezoning and development and housing costs in the city. And I want to start with an appeal of like, you know, this is a national conversation, right? When President Obama took the stage at the DNC last year, the one thing that he chose to talk to Democrats about across the country was housing costs and zoning reform. Whether it's Maura Healey, who's a more moderate Democrat, or Elizabeth Warren, who's a more left-leaning Democrat, they both agree that we need to build more housing. When Kim Driscoll came to the state of the city this year, she said that, "I am proud of Cambridge's zoning reforms." Now, the Porter Square study does have a peak at, you know, I think 18 stories, but it also has much lower for more of the, for much of the corridor. And it came out of a study that none of the city councils were on that was meant of a group of residents in the neighborhood. And I support it without amendment. I won't ask for more. But I also think that neighbors worked really hard to try to get to a good place, and we should respect that process. We've made sure the infrastructures are in place, and I know it's hard. But all the smaller reforms, whether it's ADUs that some of my colleagues talk about, or Community Land Trust, they built like seven units in the last 10 years. This is the only viable answer we have at scale.
Thank you.
So, I'm a renter. I currently live in a 12-story, 500-unit building. And I can tell you that it's not the Mecca I think that everybody thinks it is as far as it being the ultimate answer. With that density, the protection for green space setbacks and good-quality urban design become even more important for livability. And so, that's where I would like to see significant changes to the upzoning, to prioritize those things, prioritize our access to solar and sustainable energy sources, and really celebrate our neighborhoods instead of kind of putting big boxes all over the place. I really am skeptical that building taller means that it will increase our housing stock if we're not building for things that are lasting. A lot of these new builds that are going in are of, even if they're labeled as luxury, are of very poor quality and are not going to be able to last in order to make it to the market, to have an impact.
Thank you. Thank you all. Now, for the lightning round questions. Our goal is to get quick answers from you, like one sentence, but not one sentence with 13 clauses. We're going to continue to go up and down the table, so we'll start with you, Elizabeth, and go down. Okay. Biggest issue. In just a few words, what is the biggest issue confronting Cambridge right now?
I think our biggest issue is still housing and how we grow sustainably.
Besides the Trump administration, definitely housing. Every city study shows it.
Housing and immigration reform.
Agree, and just getting around the city and traffic.
Housing affordability, and again, how are we going to balance our financial picture moving forward given the current issues that we're facing?
Housing affordability, Trump, and mental health crises, which is probably Trump.
Thank you. Okay. So, here's the next one. Peter, you're going to start and bring it back. Okay. Who is your role model as a great public servant?
Not Trump. I would say President Barack Obama.
Wow, that's a great question. Yeah, I mean, I don't think anybody would disagree with Obama. You know, but actually, I think about some of the teachers that I've worked with who have worked in the therapeutic schools where I work. Their public service often goes unnoticed.
So, besides some of the counselors on the stable regime and McGovern who have taken me under the wing a little bit and shown me the ropes to some degree, my grandfather was a county commissioner in Hampden County out in Western Mass and prevented a highway from going through Hoy Oaks. So, he's my inspiration.
I lived in the South Side of Chicago, so, for six years. And I saw the influence of the Obama administration and Lori Lightfoot and what they did for the community. So, very happy about that. My greatest inspiration is my father, as many of you know, who are single parents. Thank you so much for what you do, as well as to our veterans. God bless you all. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is now my fourth election cycle, but, you know, I was recent, or I was four cycles ago a recent grad. And the first person who took a shot on me was Mark when he was mayor, and I was a recent grad, and I'll always appreciate that.
I really admire U.S. House Whip Jasmine Crockett. I think she tells it like it is, and that's something to aspire to.
Thank you all. Okay, now it's time for the closing statements. You have 30 seconds for closing comments or to bring up anything that you think might be relevant. In reverse alphabetical order, we'll start with you, Ned, and then Mark.
Thanks for giving the chance to be here. I was a new candidate. I mentioned at the beginning that I would really like to elevate the voice of the disabled and the elderly that have a tough time getting around the city. I proposed a paratransit shuttle called The Bridge, which I would hope to pilot as a city council with a few free electronic, electric shuttles to help people get from point A to point B within Cambridge. So, that's just, you know, one of the ideas that I hope to bring to the table to get creative, you know, to solve some things within the borders of the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mark and then Peter.
Thank you to our hosts, and thank you all for being here. You know, the history of Cambridge has always been about welcoming new people, as they did to my immigrant great-grandparents in 1918. We have always, the history of our city has always been about being a multicultural, international, vibrant community. I want to continue those traditions. I want to welcome new people to our city. I think it's important, and I think you do that by building housing. I want low, middle, and moderate-income families to be able to live here, to be able to stay here. I want our workers to be able to live here. That's my platform. I ask for your number-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Peter and then Elizabeth.
Thanks for having me. I think Cambridge is a great place, because of diversity and because of all of you. There are so many things that we can do better: use needles at park, you know, street safety, a lot of things that we talked about. I love Cambridge, even if we disagree. I, you know, I think the upzoning bill has the potential to actually create more wealth gap. And I, you know, and I could be wrong, but I think that is actually, that is true. So, if that is not the theme for you, vote for me.
Thank you. Elizabeth and then McQueen.
So, I think this is a really critical election year. I think that this is the opportunity for people to signal that they really do want change in the status quo, especially of the council. And so, I'm also part of the repeal slate, along with Peter, who is, which is a group of challengers that are trying to make significant changes to the way we make decisions in the city. So, I would really appreciate the vote and really appreciate you all for coming out tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. McQueen?
Thank you to Leslie University and, oh, thank you. Thank you to Leslie University and Porter Square Association. It's an honor to be here in the city of Cambridge. I do believe that housing is a human right. I do believe in immigration. I do believe that we are the people that we believe in. And it's a lot. Everybody deserves a high-quality access and education. I'm ready for city council and school committee. And I do believe that people deserve every opportunity to afford it to them. So, thank you so much. I'm on all social media platforms. God bless our veterans. Thank you.
I know housing and transit are always the hot topics. I just want to say the stuff that we're not talking about, right? The budget, the city services. Is the city run well? Are we embarrassed by our city council? And the answer in general is no. Like, we work really hard on all those other details, and we always get feedback on the places where it's really hard and you have to make difficult decisions. But the day-to-day running of the city is something that I'm very proud of. And I think that, you know, it's a lot of what we spend on our time doing. And even for those issues where we do agree, disagree, I would say it was an 8-1 vote on the city council, and that's because we had lots of different opinions, and we really tried to come together, even though it wasn't easy.
So, I just want to say that we made some cushion time expecting all the candidates to take way longer than they should. And all these candidates have been so respectful of the time and of your time and being concise, and we thank them. Thank you so much. So, let's take a minute, a minute to stretch and thank the candidates for coming and leaving and bringing... Hello, everyone. Oh, magic. Okay, so I got more helpful tips now. But first, I got a very helpful tip after the first panel. You know what it was?
Turn off the phones.
Turn off the phones. So, especially you, if you would turn off your phones, that would be wonderful.
And fix the mics.
Well, I'm going to change. Okay, the second thing. What?
Aishis.
Okay. The second thing, these microphones you have here. You're going to think that you can talk to these people loud, and you probably can. However, CCTV is doing a great job taping this for future showings for people who are not here. And if you don't use your mic, they won't hear you. So, you must use your mic. Also, the people in the back have mentioned to me that if you don't use your mic, they can't hear you. And so, you're going to lose all those votes if you don't speak loud. Okay. I know we've also talked a lot about the Porter Square Neighborhood... Who did that? Porter Square Neighborhood Association, and they're fabulous, fabulous. And everyone should sign up and become a member and participate and help make this be even bigger next time. But we don't talk very much about the Baldwin Association, who's also here. It's a little bit more south of here. They're terrific, and you should join them too. And all of the volunteers here who are making sure everyone's in their seats and making sure we're all aligned, they're coming from, they're volunteers from the Baldwin Association too. So, they're all neighbors. We're all neighbors here, and you need to support our cause. And the Association of Cambridge Neighborhoods is here too. Join these groups. This is what keeps us going, you know? Don't be alone. Okay, that's for me. So, the phones, the mics, associations, welcome. What? Oh, the timer. And I want you to know that the other two panels were way too good at being on time. So, you both have a little bit more leeway and a lot of pressure to be on time. Okay. Here we go. Here's the format for this third panel. We'll start with introductions, and I'll call candidates in alphabetical order by last name. You have 30 seconds to introduce yourselves. Then, we'll pose two questions, one minute each, to be answered in seeding order. After these questions, we have a lightning round of quick questions with hopefully brief answers. After that, in backwards alphabetical order, you'll have 30 seconds for closing comments or to bring up anything that you think might be relevant. Okay, ready? So, we'll start with the 30-second introductory statements, and we'll go in alphabetical order. So, Dana, do you want to start? And then, Stan is after her.
Hi there. It's not on. It's not on. All right.
Make sure that all the mics are on.
Step one.
It might be dead and have low power. You might want to share the two that are full.
Oh, no.
Yeah, I think it's dead.
Hello? Yes. This is a tough crowd. Okay. Hi, everybody. My name is Dana Bullister. I am a data scientist with a background in economics and policy. I am, have lived in Cambridge for the last 10 years of my life, have worked and enjoyed Cambridge for many years before that, Boston-area native. I also am board chair of the YWCA Cambridge. And I am also a member of the city's Commercial Parking Control Committee. And I am thrilled to be here and hope to add a unique perspective to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Stan and then Zion.
Hi, everybody. My name is Stan Salgripkin. I'm a lifelong educator. I currently work as Associate Director of Initiations at the Harvard Graduate School of Education. My primary reason for getting into this race is I think we can do so much more to stand up to the Trump administration in Cambridge. We are only a municipality, but there is a lot that we can do. We're one of the wealthiest cities in the country. We have immense intellectual and cultural capital. And I'd like to see us employ that to stand up for the folks that are coming under attack in our community. Thank you.
Hi, everyone.
And then Sambul, you're next.
Testing. Okay, perfect. Hi, everyone. I'm Zion Sharon. I'm a first-time challenger. I'm running, not taking any money from PACs or developers, because I believe that elections should be people-focused. I am running with a little bit of my background that kind of shapes how I'm running. I have a degree in economics and finance from Cornell University. And then, I also was an instrument operator for a land-serving company, which helps face, helps shape my views when it comes both to finances and zoning, which is probably the reason I'm part of the repeal slate. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Sambul Siddhiki here. It's such an honor to be here. I'm running for reelection this year. I grew up in Cambridge. I grew up in the Lynch Towers, Roosevelt Towers, Attorney Public Schools here, became a public interest attorney, and am now a fellow at the Cambridge School. I love this city. It's shaped who I am. I've been able to deliver actual results on education, on housing, on various other topics. It's really an honor to serve, and I would love to keep doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here. My name is Jiven Sobrino Wheeler. I'm serving my second term on the Cambridge City Council. My mom and I depended on affordable housing and affordable childcare. We were growing up, and she was working and going to school as a single mom. And I'm running for reelection to make sure that more people in Cambridge have access to those things. I've spent my career working on them right here in Cambridge at the Lincoln Institute of Land Policy and the Working Families Party. In addition to those issues, I'm proud to have led the efforts to strengthen our sanctuary city ordinance this term to protect our immigrant residents and be prepared for the kind of mass raids by federal agents that we're seeing across the country right now.
Thank you all for those introductory remarks. We'll now ask the first question. This one is on development and future zoning. It's a one-minute question. Sambul, we'll start with you and go down the table. The first question: Over the past couple of years, city staff have met with residents, business owners, and other stakeholders along the Mass Ave corridor to produce a new zoning plan for North Mass Ave from Cambridge Common through Porter Square to the Arlington Line. The Porter Square overlay will potentially be zoned for 15 to 18... The Porter Square overlay will potentially be zoned for 15 to 18-story buildings. Describe what you should, what, I'm sorry. Describe what should be built. How can we ensure trees, open space, and a human-centered environment be included?
Sambul, and then down the table.
So the process that happened, there were many people involved, and I do respect a lot of opinions that came out of the process. We haven't seen zoning yet, the council has not been involved in that, but that will be before us in discussion. I think frankly, retail and housing are going in here, and I think that's the number-one thing we need to be thinking about. Urban design is really important. I think we can have trees, we can have open space. There are ways to do it that makes sense. We have models out there that we can look to and take under consideration. I think so much has changed in many areas, but the corridors and squares, you know, they have a real potential for some big changes. How we manage that change is going to be critical, and we have to listen to that planning process. We have to listen to new voices who may have not been involved in that first prior process and come together and figure out what's right. Because of the potential height, there should be maximum amount of community benefits that are involved. That is really important. So that's what I'd say.
So when it comes to zoning as a whole, I think a lot of people have this idea of the housing crisis and how there's not enough supply, right? But then something that people don't consider is everyone wants to live in Cambridge because it's a beautiful place. And building up is not just going to solve that issue, because the question isn't just about supply, it's about affordability, right? And if building up alone solved the problem, Manhattan would be the cheapest place to live in the country. Spoiler, it's not. So I think when we're designing this zoning, we have to do form-based zoning that isn't allowing these big buy-right buildings. We can take the proper time where they're going to planning board meetings, where they're actually listening to residents. That's how we have to approach zoning, not just here, but everywhere across the city. And having this overlap of, you know, buy-right buildings popping up everywhere isn't going to solve the problem.
Thank you. Yeah, so I worked in land policy before starting on the council. Something I think about a lot is how do we do planning in a way that is both, you know, neighborhood-centered resident input and also incorporates transit and environmental planning? You know, I'm a renter. Cambridge is one of the most expensive places in the country. I think housing is a big part of that. We have added a lot of jobs in places like Kendall Square and Ale Life and not added housing at the same rate, which has increased the demand for places like Cambridge. We need to, you know, do development in a way that is smart, in a way that takes into account the transit lines, the bus routes on Mass Ave, and the MBTA stops we have in Porter. And like Council Siddiqui said, think about the community benefits that we're demanding as part of this new development. There's a big capacity from Porter to Ale Life. A lot of it is a single story. We have a, you know, strip mall-style retail around the corner. We have opportunities, but we need to be doing it in a way that is both community-engaged and smart and think about how we're planning for the future.
Absolutely. I have to echo what I've heard about having a good community process. I think that it's very, very important to listen to what our people want and take into account all the various perspectives here. I think good urban design is extremely important. I think making sure that there is a good mix of both retail and housing and green space is important. But as important as making sure that we have, we invest in the right infrastructure around these things. I think transit and housing are very interlinked, as is parking, and making sure that we regulate and we make sure that we have accessibility for parking as well. And balance those various needs is incredibly important when we decide how we develop all of this. All of these systems are very interconnected. Community benefits are absolutely critical when we negotiate these, these new steps. And so I think that having all of these in mind is incredibly important, making sure that we take into account all the stakeholders.
Yeah, I'll go ahead and echo all of that. I mean, I think squares and corridors are where I would prefer to add density if we wanted to add density to Cambridge, and I think I would be deemed to add density in order to ensure that folks have affordable housing. There's folks who have lived here for their whole lives that are struggling to afford rent here in Cambridge. It's not just folks who have moved here recently. I think that the ideal model is, of course, having basement parking, first-floor resale, excuse me, and housing above that. But to Zion's point, which I think is very important, height does not necessarily translate to affordability. But we have to actually take action besides for simply listening and simply having a strong process in order to create affordability. It's going to create action, it's going to create, it's going to require investment. There are models such as social housing, which is mixed-income public housing that we can create, that mandates that we have affordability in these units. We can set aside a certain percentage of each building for workforce housing for folks like paraprofessionals and nurses and other folks that are essential to our city's community but who cannot afford to live here. That's what I would prefer to do with our housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Ayesha, welcome.
Thank you.
We are. No problem. We are in the first question. Let me read it to you and if you're ready. Over the past couple of years, city staff have met with residents, business owners, and other stakeholders along the Mass Ave corridor to produce a new zoning plan for North Mass Ave from Cambridge Common through Porter Square to the Arlington Line. The Porter Square overlay will potentially be zoned for 15 to 18-story buildings. Describe what should be built. How can we ensure trees, open space, and a human-centered environment be included? For a minute, please.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. And my apologies again for being late. I was coming from the tribute to outstanding women of the YWCA. And so thank you for the question. You know, I grew up here in Cambridge and affordable housing, and I think that, again, we all know this, we're not a wide city, so we would need to be able to build high. But what is high? And where do we build high is the real question. I do believe that we need to make sure that we have the appropriate or necessary setbacks and be mindful of green space and open space. You know, I am a mom, so I have a three-year-old, and I think it's really important that we're like playing in parks and have that, be able to get out into nature and especially in our neighborhoods. So I value that, and I think that there isn't like a one-size-fits-all to it, but there is an opportunity for us to be creative, to be thinking outside of the box, and to make sure that we're inclusive of our neighbors in the process.
Thank you so much. Thank you, panelists. Onto the second question. This is about the city's budget. Again, this is a one-minute question. Stan, we'll start with you and move down the table. So the second question. How would you work with the council and guide the city manager to preserve Cambridge's viable programs in an environment of potential federal cuts, a wobbly biolab and biotech economy, and expected increases to our tax rates? Stan?
Yeah, so I think first of all, there's a lot of room to prioritize budget on what matters most. As I mentioned in my introduction, this is a unique political moment. We can't act like this is any other election or any other time that we're setting cities' priorities. We are in a moment where the federal government is hurrying towards autocracy and oligarchy, and folks are seriously hurting across the country and in Cambridge as well. We've had a 400% increase in food insecurity recently. We have a lot of folks who are struggling just to afford rent. And so we have to make sure that we're providing those services and prioritizing those things. We have certain line items in our budget that we could absolutely deprioritize and maybe delay for a year or two. You know, we have certain park renovations that we've needed for 20 or 30 years, but this might not be the time to spend $5 to $7 million on them, right? I'd rather have that money go on social services at a time when people are really, really hurting. But beyond that, we have to extend programs like Rise Up. We have to make sure that we're stocking our pantries. We have to provide affordable housing and make sure that we are, making sure that our shelters are staying open. That's done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree. We live in a very chaotic time, and it will be extremely uncertain for a place like Cambridge that relies so heavily on life sciences, on, you know, the academia. And so I think that it will be important to navigate this very carefully and ensure that we set aside, first, we set aside rainy day funds and are just very careful with our budget and make sure that, you know, if there's some windfall, we're prepared. I do think that we should also be prepared to think outside the box with respect to our budget. I mean, one thing that I think we really should be talking about, especially when we're talking about housing, is land value tax, right? Which basically means that you lower the tax of buildings and structures and you raise the tax associated with land. Every, you know, pretty much economists across all ideologies agree this is a really good idea. It incentivizes the behavior that we want, and it basically punishes those who have a lot of land and also have vacant property, storefronts, houses, et cetera. So we should consider that, too.
Thank you. So Cambridge is wrapping up its first charter review in more than 80 years. It's going to be on the ballot along with November, November 4th. I hope folks will vote yes on that. And one of the reasons on there is there are efforts in there to strengthen the city's budget process that I worked on along with Council Siddiqui and others that lays out a process. Normally, we don't, the budget doesn't come before the council until May or so of each year, April, May, and then it's voted on in June. The amendments in there would start the budget process earlier, including in the fall and December, so we can put forward those budget asks and have a fuller conversation about that. As other folks have mentioned, it is going to be a challenging time with the federal administration and others for our budget. We've got to look creatively at where we can raise revenue from. We have two universities with multi-billion-dollar endowments in Cambridge that don't pay taxes. They instead pay pilots. Payments and move taxes have been part of the effort to strengthen the payments they're making to the cities to make sure they're paying their fair share. Also strengthening the linkage fee so that we're looking at the expanse corporations that exist in Kendall Square and Ale Life that they are chipping in via jobs linkage fee to help pay for job training programs so we don't have to pay for them with taxes.
Thank you. I would just say that it's important that we're being mindful of what we can do and what we probably can't do right now, right? I think Cambridge is a place everyone wants to pride itself on having this, it feels like this endless pot of gold and that we could just kind of spend and do as we please with every initiative that comes in mind. But right now, we need to be a little bit tight with our purse strings. We really need to really be mindful and thinking about investing in social services, investing in social justice and equity, making sure that our most vulnerable families are being served during this time. And I think, and I agree with my colleague in regards to how the partnership with Harvard and MIT, the payment of legal taxes, like how can we actually strengthen that to make sure that individuals, to make sure that we can actually do more of the things, the needed, necessary things, to make sure that members of our community, again, our most vulnerable members of our community are able to thrive. I think that's what's going to help us create a community that Cambridge can really be proud of versus kind of where we are, where we're a community that's truly divided.
So when it comes to the budget, right, there's really two parts that we control. It's revenue and it's expenses. It's that simple. So when it comes to the revenue, we're already having issues with vacancy in labs, which is really going to impact the evaluation of these new buildings, right? And then we also have issues with the higher education being target number one, Harvard, right? So it's not necessarily easy for us to go and turn to the universities and say, hey, can you give us more while you're already getting attacked by the federal government? So it's just a really tough position that we're going to be in. Unfortunately, Cambridge also has an issue with expenses. Some people call it the Cambridge tax, where everything seems to be so much more expensive when we are building stuff inside of our city compared to our neighboring cities. So we need to address that and also make sure that when we're quoting projects, I was looking at one fire station improvement project that was quoted originally for $25 million, and I think it was $77 million is what it ended up costing, the taxpayers. Those are the things that we need to be on top of and make sure that not only are we picking the right capital improvement projects, but that we're making sure that when we get quotes, that it's actually following in line with what they said.
On the pilot issue, someone was mayor, pulled up the contract, and it said, unless the city says something, it's going to run there for another 20 years. And they meant that the city, the landlord had been paying to the city, it was formerly a, formerly. This year, last year, they gave us $6 million. We're in negotiation. It isn't the solution, but it is something we have to think about as a potential source, given their endowment and compared to a lot of other universities and smaller-sized cities. On the budget, the city council has already put aside money towards a stabilization fund. We allocated $5 million to a stabilization fund to say, look, if there are things in the federal, that are going to take a hit, we're going to rely on that money and use it. We put aside money, that's something that we really work with the city manager to do, and we'll continue to do that. I think ultimately, we will have to prioritize. There are a lot of competing interests. There are things that the council wanted to do, municipal block ban, a day shelter, all of these ideas, there's plenty of them, but we have to prioritize and pick and choose, and we have to take care of our most vulnerable at the same time.
Thank you all. Now it's time for the lightning round questions. Our goal is to get a quick answer from you, and we'll continue to go up and down the table. So this one is a little tricky, so you have to listen hard because it's easy to mess this one up. Okay. Sorry. Okay. Name one thing that you did not initiate and that is not housing-related that you are pleased the council enacted this term. Name one thing that you did not initiate and that is not housing-related that you are pleased the council enacted this term.
I wasn't the lead sponsor of this, but I'm really proud of Council Sobrino Wheeler for leading the effort. I was a sponsor, co-sponsored, but he led it on revising our welcoming city ordinance. It's the strongest in the nation, and so that's something we really should, well, in Massachusetts, I'd say, in Massachusetts. So that's something that I'm glad he did.
Well, I haven't initiated anything, because I'm not on the council. So let's just start with that. And I think that if I had a ton of things that I loved that the council was doing, I wouldn't be running. If I'm being completely honest. I do have concerns when it comes to the housing, and I have a lot of concerns when it comes to green spaces.
No, no, this is positive. No, no, positive answer. You're pleased.
All right, we're moving on? Okay, thank you. So I want to also agree, I was a co-sponsor but did not actually lead on this one in regards to, so I appreciate the welcome, welcome city ordinance, but also the broker's fees. So making sure that we actually eliminated the broker's fees. I know that that's housing, but, you know, but I'm really proud, I'm really proud of it because it definitely saves money for renters, and that is a huge, huge thing. And someone who was a renter in this city, it can absolutely impact the pockets of individuals and families.
The thing that I'm proud of that we've initiated, and we still got to get it over the finish line, is something Council Siddiqui has led on, which is the Guaranteed Income Program. We had a pilot program that was funded by ARPA dollars. That federal funding ran out. We're looking at how do we keep something like that going? We've been having discussions and hopefully we get there, because, you know, a few hundred dollars a month makes such a huge difference for families, for childcare, for education, for things. I'm hopeful we can keep that program going.
Done. You took mine. I, I am, I have not initiated anything either, but of all, of all, all the, all the various projects that have been put forward and discussed, I think, I think the Rise Up program is incredibly inspiring. I think that Cambridge has positioned itself as well it should as a leader in so many ways. And so as, you know, the country and the world is moving forward, you know, with concerning governments, you know, AI, all of this consolidation of money, I think this is going to be key to our future, and I think Cambridge has a role in that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on that. All the sitting councils on the stage voted the right way and demonstrated leadership on the Rise Up program. Unfortunately, one of my disappointments with this council is that we were not, we were not able to extend it. Sure, but, but these folks were all in support, and I want to give them kudos for that. They did a great job trying to get that across the finish line. But the welcoming city ordinance is really critical. I think it's a really important first step. We have to figure out a way to make our immigrant community feel safe, to make them feel welcome, to make them feel they can come out of the shadows and utilize city services. And we have to continue to train our city personnel about how they can better support that community.
Right. Thank you all. You did a good job. Okay, so in just a few words, what will make you a good council member next term? Stan will start with you. What will make you a good council member next term?
I think I'm always going to say what's on my mind, whether that is something that, you know, upsets the custom of city council or not, you know? I think that too often, there's a lot of, there's a lot of hesitancy to speak out. There's a lot of desire to maintain decorum. And I think decorum is great, but it can't come at the cost of accountability. And I think this goes back to the conversation I was just having with Rise Up. Three of the councils who voted for it are on this stage, and I give them kudos. They led on that. Others did not, and I'm going to make sure to say that.
Thank you. Dana?
Great. Yeah, I think I can add a unique perspective to the council. So right now, I mean, what I'm doing is I'm a public policy researcher. I'm at Northeastern. I'm getting my PhD in that. I'm so passionate about policy. I really do think that it's the way to address some of the most important issues right now. And so I'm all in. I will work with, I'm open-minded, I'm willing to contribute new ideas, and most importantly, I'm willing to listen as well.
Thank you, Dana. Jivin?
Yeah, for me, it's a constituent service. I spent a lot of time last year, you know, outside election season, just knocking doors, talking to people, saying like, what local issues can we help with? And it's those things, those improvements to the sidewalks, that getting the tree trimmed that's in the way are not just like important to individual folks, but that's how the policy comes from, too. Do we need a stronger sidewalk improvement ordinance? Do we need the arborist to be out there more regularly? It's from those constituent issues that the policy things come to.
Thank you.
Thank you. I love this question. I think what will make me a good, successful candidate councillor for next term is always just continuing to be an active listener. I'm always willing to listen, even if we're on opposing sides of things, and I think that that's really key to this work. But I'm also going to always lift up our most vulnerable and think about the unintended consequences in everything that we do. I really like to channel my system of service, Congresswoman Presley, and thinking about those who are closest to the pain should be closest to the power. So with every decision that we make, how are we centering our most vulnerable people in that process?
Thank you.
Sure. So for me, I think that something I realized pretty early on was a lot of people don't feel very heard. One of the first things that I did on my website is put a book with me or meet with me link, which people could book a call. I actually have seen a lot of faces here that I have talked to, and it was surprising how many people were shocked when I would give them a call. They booked it. And I said, sure. And that's something that I plan to keep through my campaign, is not just, you know, of course responding to emails, making sure you're getting back to people, but also having it so that it's so easy where people can just go on the website, look for a time that works for them. If it doesn't work this week, it's updated every two weeks. And normally after a forum like this, my calendar gets completely booked. So if you're interested in doing one, a little plug real quick, please go on the website. It's a Meet with Zion.
That's okay. All good, all good.
I'd say for me, I'm a collaborator and I'm an implementer of work. I think for me, it's about getting the actual thing done, and I don't have to lead on it. I've often said, why don't you take the lead? You know, I want to help get that done. And I think that's important, to be able to work together with a group of people on issues you may not always agree on, but can we come to consensus and work together?
Thank you so much. Okay, now it's time for the closing statements. You have 30 seconds for closing comments or to bring up anything that you think might be relevant. So we're going reverse alphabetical order. So Ayesha, we'll start with you and then Jivin.
Great, thank you. I'm really excited to see so many faces here in this room. Please vote Ayesha number one on November 4th or sooner this election. This is an important election. We want to make sure that individuals who can really raise up and lift voices are there and are centered. I'm a mom to a toddler, a social worker, a nonprofit leader, and someone who has really spent many of my years committed to serving Cambridge. So I look forward to continuing to do that, but I look forward to having your support. Please join votaeyesha.com, Team Ayesha, and help us knock doors, help us get the word out. But thank you so much for being here, and I look forward to continuing to talk to you all.
Thank you so much. Jivin and then Sambal.
My name is Jivin Sabrina Wheeler. I've served my career working on these issues, on childcare affordability, on housing, on transportation, on protecting immigrant residents and standing up to the federal administration. I lost my first reelection by just a handful of views votes. If these are issues you care about, I'm asking for your number one vote on November 4th.
Thank you. Sambal and then Zion.
I'm Sambal Siddiqui. I would love you in the role of vote consideration. I love being a city councillor, and I've had the honor now of serving as mayor for two terms. And we've done what we've done, from universal free K to craving at early childhood for early college program at CULS. There are a lot of issues that I've been able to deliver actual results on, and I would love to keep doing that and being in the city that's really shaped who I am and being able to shape policy. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. Stan and then Stan after her.
So I'm going to go back and actually say one thing that I'm proud of the council. We had a community benefits package of a little over $20 million for a project that was happening in East Cambridge. Originally, it was supposed to go to one nonprofit, and then with work, it did go to other nonprofits as well. It's not the amount that I would have liked to see, but it is something that I thought was progress. Then, as far as my closing remarks, if anyone has any questions for follow-up, I know these panelists are so quick, please do reach out to me. I love having these conversations. And other than that, I think that's really important that we get some other challenges as well. I personally think that zoning is one of the main concerns that's happening with our city because it doesn't prioritize green spaces, solar, and everything else.
Thank you so much. Stan and then Dana.
Yeah, so these are obviously very quick responses. So I do hope that to learn more about me, you can go to www.stanorfkin.com. But the reason I'm running is I, we absolutely need more straight talk and we, we need to be able to have frank conversations about what our values are, what our priorities are, and how our policies live up to the values that we claim to hold, both at the local level and at the federal level. I'm going to fight every single day for working people, and I'm going to fight against the Trump administration with every bit of energy that I have, if you like me. Thank you.
I think the people of Cambridge deserve a council that's responsive, a council that's has fresh ideas, that's evidence-driven, and that's diligent. And so I think that the council needs to address people's top concerns, which is making sure that we go about housing in the right way and contributes, yeah, just new insights. And I hope that, yeah, and I hope to be as open and accessible as possible and that you'll consider voting me number one. Dana Bullister.
Thank you. So what I want to do now is I want you to sit for one more minute because I know you're going to get up and go home immediately, so give me one more minute. First, I want to thank the panelists. I think this third panel was just as great as the other two, don't you? But, okay, so thank you, thank you for coming, thank you for running. Before we end the forum, let me just make some closing remarks. We thank all of the candidates, both for city council and school committee, for running for public office this year. It's hard work and really important. Thank you to the neighborhood groups who sponsored this event and organized turnout.